And our village attorney Fred Mack, or excuse me Fred Marty, sorry about that Fred. Even with the cheat sheet, I screw up names. So with that said, to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So.
Okay, and let's see, I'm assuming that we have Peter here. So Peter, give me a second and I'm going to allow you to talk. So you can present your case for six oh two Orchard Street. And I'm going to promote you to a panelist so we can see your video if you haven't had. So Peter, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
All right, um. You guys, you have the documents in front of you or?
We do.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward. Um. Rip the old front porch off last October to re-site the house. And then what we're building in front of it is a pergola sitting on a stamp creep pads. It will not be affixed to the house. It's going to just sit about two inches away. Um, it's that's just kind of a rendering of what it'll look like. Um, it'll have a stamp creep pad resemblance to the bottom of that that our current dimensions are ten by twenty, which is about the old porch varied from like eightish feet to eight sixtyish out. And we're going to build just the pergola on top. It won't have like a weatherproof roof or anything. It'll be more decorative. And it'll provide a little bit of shade. And um, hold up my screen change. Yeah, um.
Did you have any questions regarding it?
Yep, uh, Peter, I was by the house today. Took a look at it. The area where the pergola is going to be is at the area where the dirt has been removed or the grass has been removed. It's just a dirt area.
Yeah, that's where the old porch used to be. So that's just dirt because we ripped the old porch off. Um, it'll be there and it will kind of extend into that garden bed. I think it's about eight inches, but roughly yeah, that dirt area is just about the same area that's a new concrete pad and pergola will be.
Okay.
How large was the original porch?
Um, it was about, it wasn't even, it was like a hundred years old. Uh, it was about, it was a little narrower, roughly about nineteen and a half feet wide, and it came out on the one side, I think about seven foot eight inches and on the other side about eight two.
So you're basically increasing it by two feet on roughly one direction and a half a foot to a foot on the other direction.
Yeah, and uh, it is about a half a foot, but it's pretty much the
With the
The roof line, the old porch had a full roof and that was as wide. Is this, yeah, I'm just making the width kind of fit the trim line on the front of the house.
So was this non-conforming in the first place?
Yeah, the whole house is, the house is only twenty-one feet from the road. So the house itself is nine feet into the variant zone and then the old porch continued out further. And the surrounding houses are even closer to the road.
So it's, it's a non-conforming, uh, it, the original porch was non-conforming and the house was as well.
Yeah, the house still is and the original porch was nine, non-conforming and this is just gonna non-conform by about two more feet.
Any particular reason why you have the stamp creep?
What she wanted, um, she was looking for kind of no low maintenance in terms of everything. We redid the house. Um, I don't know if you noticed when you went by, but that's actually composite. It's not real cedar.
Very nice.
Yeah, it came together really nicely and um, yeah, she just liked the stamp creep. We're going to do like a I, she has to finalize her design, but I think it's going to like have a, a herringbone brick pattern stamped into it. But she thought she'd go with a stamp creep just because brick, um, you know, has mortar joints and stuff that can grow up and have to be maintained. And ideally the stamp creep pad will just be maintenance free.
The other question, um, she picked a pergola versus her neighbors that have porches. I'm just curious is the thought process behind that?
Um, I think part was, I think she saw pictures online of them and she liked the look of them. Um, she, I don't think she really, maybe cost-wise as well. You know, the rest of the work on the house is pretty expensive and the pergola option is a little bit cheaper. And it was basically just kind of what she liked and what she wanted. I didn't really ask her why.
And she also decided to have it go out and an additional two feet towards the sidewalk.
Um, that was what I recommended to her when you're doing the stamp creeds, being in like a uniform ten by twenty shape. The stamps are like pre-made and just having them in a nice even increment allows you to have a cleaner pattern. And it's a little less labor to not have to try to patch in an uneven size and so just making it ten by twenty, it's nice and uniform. It'll have being half the depth to the width. We'll give it a nice uniform shape. It won't seem too long. And so it's just kind of the design I had come up with. I don't think she has a specific preference. Well, ultimately, I think it would look best this way. And then the other thing, since it is like a pergola, that's only one step off the ground. It doesn't have a railing or anything. So it won't have a lot of body in terms of the feel when you're going down the street or anything. Since there's no uh, like thick roof that's coming down, there's no railing going around. You'll be able to just look right through it.
Which is really not in keeping with the, the historic nature of the, of the area, but um.
Yeah, I believe I got approval from the previous meeting.
No, I know. I know there was a positive recommendation, but from an historic point of view, it's not. So that's just my comment.
And I'm just trying to understand the dimension from the original porch because the stamp creep pad is ten feet. And how far out did you say the original porch extended?
Uh, it varied from one side to the other because it wasn't square, but about seven and a half to eight feet.
Okay.
I think I had the original, uh.
Well, the, the question I would have is for the adjacent, you know, in keeping with, with the neighborhood. Are the other porches coming out that far?
Um, if you go along the street, some of the houses almost coming out that far themselves. You know, they're almost, it, it variants is thirty feet all along the street. Almost every house would be um, roughly out of variance. Let me see here, I can probably.
Yeah, the two houses, the two houses up the street from, they have porches on it are significantly closer to the sidewalk. They're, they're, they're all really, I mean, that was the first thing I noticed. I drove down the street and said, wow, where's there room to put a porch on anything out here? They're, they're, they are extended pretty close.
Yeah, and our old office used to be on Clinton Street and I think we've probably redone a dozen porches throughout the neighborhood. And almost every, every one I encounter, the houses are kind of out of variance to start.
Good.
And here, I'm just zooming in on the street just to get like a a top of the view perspective here. Um, I hadn't been by the house in a few weeks. So where is it? We're on Orchard, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so if you were to look, uh, the five houses in a row on its little block are kind of all roughly the front of the houses get a little progressively closer to the street. And then the neighbor ones do have larger porches. And if you were to jump over past Green Street, those houses, uh, the houses themselves are closer to the sidewalk than the whole porch will be. If you just continue down Orchard.
Yeah, the house next door, right, okay.
Any other comments or questions? For the attendees that are attending right now, if you'd like to say something, uh, if you hit the raise your hand button, I believe it's on the bottom of your screen. Um, you can raise your hand and we will allow you to speak. So if you have any questions or concerns or would like to say anything, feel free to raise your hand and it'll give you the opportunity to address the board. I don't see any, I don't see any questions from the public. Um, does anybody else on the board have any further questions for Peter?
No.
We have a motion to.
Mark, the only comment to um, to make you aware of is that we did receive a mailed in comment regarding six oh two Orchard Street. I don't know if you want me to read the letter we received.
Yeah, could you? That'd be great because you probably have it right in front of you. I'll have to go dig through the.
Um, so we did receive a letter dated today to the Fayetteville zoning board. As a notified resident within the five hundred feet of six oh two Orchard Street, I would like to respectfully submit my comments on the variance request submitted for a front porch pergola on this property. Considering the historical nature of the neighborhood and the houses surrounding the property, a front porch pergola does not fit with the aesthetics of the village of Fayetteville or the surrounding neighborhood of this property. Many of them have plaques indicating that the homes were built in the mid to late eighteen hundreds. It would be ideal to preserve as much of that aesthetic where possible. Prior to the renovation, six oh two Orchard Street also had one of these plaques. Um, the local Fayetteville residents take great pride in maintaining the residence and commercial properties. They also take great pride in keeping with a similar respectful appearance throughout the area. Additionally, but importantly throughout the village, there's not going to be any porches that are pergolas placed on the front of the home. Thank you for your time and consideration. Um, it was unsigned. That's the only comment that I've received, whether through mail or email.
Okay.
And there are no uh, formal historic district issues here.
No, no. It's not in the historical, right?
Right.
All right, so do we have a motion to close the public?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, discussion. You know, I, I don't see a big challenge with this. I know the pergola doesn't fit the historic district, but it's certainly going to be less bulky than a porch on the front of that and a porch on the front of that's going to be pretty bulky and and that house seems a little bit closer to the street as it is than the other houses on the street.
I think the original porch wasn't very bulky because it was just columns and a rooftop. So it's not that far off from, from where it was, other than the fact that it was weatherproof by having a roof. Um, and buildings adjacent and down that street really are um, all quite different. And we're not in the historic district, so.
Right.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Like, do you have something to say? You look like you might have been ready to say something.
Um, did we discuss five criteria questions yet?
No, not yet.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion for this?
Do you want to run through the criteria, five criteria or?
Yeah, we can do that. We can go ahead and run through five criteria, Fred, that's fine.
I think that's helpful.
Okay, all right, I'll lead, I'll ask the questions. Uh, first question, will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to new add properties?
No.
No. No.
Do I need to do this by name, roll call, do you think?
We can.
All right, so that was, there was no, everyone was no.
And I was no.
Okay, thank you. All right, Fred, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. Uh, two, can the applicant achieve the benefit by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
Technically, I think yes, because it doesn't need to be out ten feet. It could be within the requirement.
But it's still.
If the house on the whole is less than the setback, anything on the front would be, would require it.
Yeah, the, the houses already passed the thirty-foot setback, so there's really nothing you can do to the house without asking for variance.
But you're increasing the non-conformance by going beyond the eight feet that it was. So my answer would be yes.
I would say technically yes, too.
Who was that?
That was Jack.
Mark.
Uh, I would say technically yes, based on that discussion.
Dan.
I, I agree.
Tim?
I agree.
Oh unanimously, yes.
Okay, three, is the area variance request substantial?
No.
No.
Julia, Julia's no, was that Jack no?
Yes, no.
No. Again, no. Mark is no.
And Tim?
Tim is no. No.
I think it was unanimous, okay.
Okay, four, will the variance have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the district?
No.
I don't, no, I don't think so.
No, I don't think.
No.
And no, Tim no, Julia no, Jack?
Jack, no.
Mark?
Mark, no.
Okay.
I think we should call a roll that we weren't at all talking at once because we got to get the people's names in there for the record.
That's what I'm doing, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess that brings us to number five.
Five, was the alleged difficulty self-created?
Dan?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Okay, everyone want to make a motion?
I would go that we uh, accept the request for a variance, an area variance for six oh two Orchard Street.
Do we have a, do we have a second on that?
I'll second, Tim.
Tim seconds it. Fred, can you read the motion?
Uh, certainly.
Thanks.
Uh, based on the balance we've above referenced, uh, findings of fact, the village of Fayetteville zoning board appeals hereby determines the benefit to the applicant for application. Uh, zero one seven point dead, zero nine dead, zero two point zero outweighs the detriment to health, safety and welfare of the community. And the area variance is granted to permit the applicant to have a front yard setback of eleven feet adjacent to the pergola to be constructed in the front yard of the property.
All right, let's have a vote. Dan?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mark is yes. Unanimously carried. So Peter, your next steps will be to uh, file for the permit, I believe, with Mike or uh, I think it's Mike, right?
Mike, yes.
Yep.
All right?
All right, thank you. I got about five others going with it right now, so we should be all set and I hope to start construction in the next week. Yeah, I, I already have, yeah, all the paperwork filed with him, so it's pretty much waiting on this approval. And um, my schedule, because we just did phase one opening in our industry, so.
All right, well, we're going to change you back to attendee, Peter, so unless you have any other things else to say, you have a good night.
Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
You too. Bye. All right, so next on the agenda is Timothy Murphy of seven seventy Warren Street requesting a use variance and an area variance for an apartment building. And I am going to promote him to a panelist after we have motioned over the meeting.
Motion to open the meeting.
That was Julia's second. Dan? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously open up the meeting, so let me get Tim here. And we will promote him to panelist. Good evening, Tim, how are you? You're muted right now, Tim. Good evening, Tim.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Is there anybody attending the meeting with you?
Yes, there should be a Terry Mannion.
Okay, I will promote him. I will promote him to panelist also so the two of you can present. So.
Do you have information that you wanted to present from your screen? As far as any images or drawings like plans, or if you want me to do it from the application you submitted?
Are you talking to Tim?
To Tim Murphy, Mr. Murphy, do you?
Yes, Karen.
Did you want to share your screen? Did you have information to share? Or do you want me to just use the application you submitted?
Uh, just the application that I submitted.
Okay.
Okay. Terry, are you there? I think you're muted, Terry.
Can you hear me?
There you are, yep. Yep. Well, thank you very much for having me present tonight. After uh, reviewing with my lawyer and uh, we would like to withdraw the, the use variance and have a variance for the building to be used as a six-unit uh, building. So what uh, what I did here is back in two thousand seventeen, I purchased this building as a six-unit building. And um, i- in good faith, I purchased this six-unit. I researched the property on OnGov. And it was listed in the OnGov registry as a six-unit building in an R four area. I purchased the building based on income to offset the mortgage, insurance, taxes and maintenance. Um, all in good faith. Um, so um, I've, I've put money back into the building. I've had this building going on three years now and have upgraded appliances, carpetings, et cetera, et cetera. The building has been maintained with no complaints or issues from tenants, neighbors, police um, for some time now. In fact, prior to me buying it. All units are, that I, I rent here are single units and they provide a unique um, value to those looking for affordable single rooms in a clean, safe environment. Um, the low, the building, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the location of the building. The building is located on the corner of Warren and South Street. And Sarah Bollinger, who was on the planning board, lives right on South Street, whoops. And um, gave a recommendation for this to be approved based on, you know, where she lives and, and knowing that the apartment building is a, is a good, nice neighborhood. Um, I've rented this building out and um, you know, some of the folks that I have in the two questionable apartments that are in the cellar of the building. Um, one gentleman is a veteran. He's a, he works down the VA. I actually gave him one of the apartments for use when he didn't have a job, when he was looking for a job. So um, he was able to find a job, get employed down at the VA. And um, so he's maintained that building for, or that apartment for some time. And I have another gentleman in the other apartment and they're all single people that live in the building. So usually parking um, noise, anything like that is really not a problem. The building's been existing there since nineteen eighty-four. Um, and there's no, there's no difference to this. Um, allowing the property to maintain as its present status will continue to have no impact on the neighborhood aesthetically. And again, there's no negative impact on the environment around the area of the ambiance. Um, you know, I usually, I, I rent to single people in this apartment, usually nurses or teachers who have usually their first apartment buildings. And um, you know, we just, uh, we bought it in good faith of having this as a six-unit and um, and here we are today. So I'd like to have my lawyer Terry Mannion just speak for a little bit and um, then we can kind of open it up.
Um, I don't have much to say. I apologize for being dark. I have every light that I can possibly get in my house here and it's not the screen. I apologize. Um, just two very brief things.
Yeah, thank you, that's why.
Yeah. Um, I, I've got it, I've got it everywhere. I've tried to put it everywhere. Um, again, just to, to reiterate, it, it has a, a very substantial impact on Mr. Murphy. He's not allowed to continue. This is a six-unit. Um, obviously, it's a, a third of his revenue from the property. It has not had any impact on the neighborhood. He mentioned Sarah Bollinger um, who was, who recommended it positively from the planning board, lives right there and confirms that it's never an issue, that the density is not an issue, parking is not an issue. There's a very well-kept property and in terms of the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood and of the community, this has been this way since, uh, at least since two thousand two and has not impacted the neighborhood in any negative way.
There is also, um, in the area, there are, there is a five-unit building that is in the village of Fayetteville in the same area. Um, and I'm sure they've had no problems either and I'm sure they're, again, the same type of bill, or same type of apartment, entry-level apartment, clean, good space, safe space for people to live.
Any questions for? And again, if you're attending and you have any comments, uh, if you raise your hand, we can turn your system on so you can speak. So I see there's some people in the audience, so if anybody wants to speak, just raise your hand and it'll allow you to speak. Do any of the board members have any questions for the applicant? Do I have a motion to close the public meeting then?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I, I'm just thinking if we should hear a little bit from Mike Jones in terms of code. Because um, you know, running through this, it was, the permit was for four apartments. And there was never a, a building permit pulled for the extra two. So does this even have a certificate of occupancy?
No.
No, that's, that's what we're going for. Because when I bought the building, it was rented out as a six. I checked the OnGov records. And I believe you guys have copies of the OnGov records.
We do.
Um, yeah, and it does say that it's a six-unit building in the OnGov records.
Yeah. But it's never had a CO?
Right, it had CO for four apartments. The other two went, went on unpermitted and uninspected. So.
And, and the problem I see is even if a code enforcement official before you, you know, if it didn't meet the code, it didn't meet the code. So.
Well, I think the issue, I, I think the.
I know, but what I'm asking is, do, have you been in those two apartments, Mike? Do they meet code in terms of exiting and, and?
Well, the.
What you would inspect?
The Egress appears to be adequate. Um, like to sill height, window opening size, um, you know.
I guess what I'm getting at is if do, does it meet the code, today's code, if, if someone would come in and ask for a permit for, for building those apartments in the way that they're in?
I think what we, I think that if we do approve that, it's going to have to be contingent of a, of an inspection and make sure there's an authorization and inspections of the certificate of needed, or certificate of occupancy is, is granted. That would have to be a criteria for the approval because obviously the apartments were built without permits and without inspections. So they're obviously going to have to go under a full inspection to make sure that they, they comply with code for the CO.
Right, well, that's where I'm going is that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will. Will, if they're in the position to, because if they can't even meet that, depending on sill heights and exiting, you know, you're, it's kind of moot. So if you're in the position to receive it because they can meet code is where I'm going. Pardon?
It would have to meet today's code.
Correct, which is just changed.
The
By ways.
Yes, yes, they're better than the structure by the fire.
The sill. The sill heights, I believe, and the windows are egress. Oh, I believe those would meet the code. I'm sure there probably have to be some fire alarm upgrades, which we would be willing to do. You know, and, and be anything to, to bring it up to code.
Yeah, I, I visited the property personally and, and visited both of those apartments in the basement and they're fairly well done. I don't know if they're up to code or not because I'm not qualified to make that determination, but the apartments are certainly neat, clean, orderly and uh, look like any other apartments that I've been in. Over the years in the basement.
Yeah, I mean, the code just changed at May twelfth, so. So I don't think all of us are up to speed in terms of what those changes are, but it would come under the existing code anyway and property management.
Yeah.
What?
You'd need to hire an architect to review it.
Not me.
And like to inspect it. Any other questions or concerns for the
Yes, I would be willing to do that, Julia.
Well, because the end result is you need to have a C of O, I mean, so you're, you're done with this, so that's why I was asking the questions. If it's viable for those two apartments at this point in time. That's the first, you know, order of business is if it can come up to code. Does that, you know, I don't know what the, the ceiling heights are there and, and all of those things play into the scenario of what, whether, you know, you've got the proper heights.
I, yeah, that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that really comes under the auspices of we grant the six unit, that's up to, with a contingency that meets inspection, that's up to the architects. Mike, to do all that, I don't think that that's necessarily our purvey here is to determine whether or not it passed. Um, so I think that it's really more about, uh, are we willing to grant the exception for the two apartments to start the process of him getting a CO and getting it inspected properly.
Is Karen, are you there?
Yes.
Um, in the paperwork here, it says, if I'm reading it correctly, the planning board recommended denial of the variances.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep, I don't have the minutes before, but they um were all to not agree with.
You know, one of the, one of the issues the planning board had with it was this property, the previous owner had applied for a building permit and, and variance to build the two apartments. It was denied at least once. I think it was actually denied twice. It was, I think it was denied two different times and then ultimately he built it anyhow and nobody noticed. And then when Mr. Murphy came in to buy the property, he relied on government records that listed as a si- six unit property, so he didn't look any further to the village to see if there was any discrepancy there because he assumed the county records were accurate. And then now, when he got a fire inspection, um, it came up that these two apartments were never permitted. And as a result of that, they involved Mike and Mike did the research and discovered that um, the permits were, the, the variance was denied twice, the permits were never issued and it was built anyhow and that's what started this whole thing. That was pretty much the just, so the planning board came back with a negative recommendation on the property. I do have a letter here from Christopher Bollinger that uh, I think it just came in today in support of six unit building.
Sarah's husband.
Yeah. Well, it's, but it's listed as Christopher, it's not listed as Sarah, so.
You need, are you reading those or paraphrasing the comments received?
Um, if you want, I can read it. It says, comments, one, use variance. The current owner, CPM management should not be held accountable for the misdeeds building basement apartments without a permit of the previous owner because routine due diligence would not have discovered the illegally built apartments. Uh, the building was listed in public records at ongov.net as a six unit building. Seven seventy Warren Street uh, was assessed as a six unit building for property taxes. There were six mailboxes and six doorbells equally displayed at the building entrance. There were six fully developed apartments occupied by tenants and to the area variance, although we know uh, we now know it was not permitted. This building has had six units for many years. On-street parking is legal but has never been used. The existing parking lot space has been adequate to accommodate six tenants. And while the code may require more parking, actual usage does not. That was the letter that we received um, from Christopher Bollinger.
Far as any public comments, that's the only thing we've received.
Correct. And again, if there's any attendees that want to add their comments to the official record, you know, please raise your hand so we, you could be heard. Or you can use the chat button and send a chat message.
I don't think the chat was enabled.
Okay. And I see no hands raised, so a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Who is that? That was Jack?
Jack.
Tim second.
Tim seconds. Dan, are you in favor? Close the meeting?
I'm in favor of closing the meeting, yes.
Tim?
Hi.
Julia?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark, yes. All right, discussion?
Well, I have a question for Fred. What, what uh, eh, so I heard at the very beginning, uh, they withdrawing their use variance request?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think that makes sense because it's, this is a, uh, as defined by the village code, this would be a multiple family dwelling. And a multiple family dwelling is not a permitted use within an R2 district, R2. One family dwellings are townhouses. So I think if you, if you withdraw the use variance, I, I, I think it's ineffective for what the applicants are trying to achieve here. I think, unless I'm missing something.
Well, they already, they already have a variance for a four unit building, so they've already are in a position where they're outside of an R2 dis- district anyhow, so you're only talking about increasing the number of renters and something that it's alr- they're already permitted to do for. So they basically emptied the two apartments in the basement, they still have no problem operating or wouldn't need any variance to do that because they already have it.
You're still expanding and not conforming use, though.
If you're going to have units, you need a use variance. I mean, I don't know any other way around it.
All right, you're expanding the use.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mike? Um, one of the violations that was listed here is change of use or, or occupancy. They're not changing use for, I'm not understanding.
Change in the use or occupancy.
From what to what?
From uh uh, four to six. And activity.
Well, that's changing occupancy, which you're not really changing use.
Still residential.
Right, it was approved for four.
Right, right. So it's really just the change in occupancy of the number of apartments, not the change of occupancy in terms of its classification.
What about that it's in an R2 district, which is not any multiple you know, buildings allowed, you know. Single families in R2.
It was originally listed as an R4.
Yeah, there's
I think I lost my lawyer.
But when it was R4 when it was R4, um, it was only approved for the four, four units. Not for the six.
Right.
Right.
And, and wasn't there a, a fire inspection or didn't it wasn't denied? No, I wouldn't have, fire department did their inspection. I don't believe the fire inspection
Yeah, I don't think the fire, the fire inspection didn't show any issues. It just discovered that it was a six unit being used for six units instead of four, which was what was on their list. So they just basically reported it is two extra apartments. You know, it brought it to Mike's attention and Mike researched it. But they, they didn't list any, any fire, by knowledge of what I've heard at the planning board and the other documents didn't show any issue with the fire inspection. It just was an issue that it didn't match what they were expecting to find.
Yes, you know, as long as the people that are in the basement, uh, units are able to get out for any sort of an emergency. That, that would be the only issue that would happen.
Right, and they, they were, the windows are egress.
The windows are egress in the lobby between the two apartments in the basement. You can go left and go upstairs and go out the front of the building or go right and go out the back of the building, depending on which door you came out of, right and left reverses, but there are stairs going to a front exit and a back exit of the building right outside of each of their apartment doors.
Is, is a fire inspection part of the requirements for the
It should be, yes.
You're breaking up, Dan.
Okay, I, I wondered if the fire inspection is required before a certificate of occupancy is given.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
True to problem here too is the density, area variance that he's looking for. Correct? The density.
Um, and also parking. Those are the two area variance, area variances that are needed.
Is the building sprinklered?
No.
And by code, it's an R2? Well, no, that's where it gets mixed up. I, building occupancy code-wise, I'm, it's different from the district, so that's why I'm asking, it's an R2. Because I'm looking at the new code, um. Do you know if the R2s are going to have to have? Well, it wouldn't matter. Um, okay, forget it.
I, I see you're forgetting that the, the R2 is I mean, it's
It's more than two dwelling units, so. Well, just because he should understand that I, and I'm not as familiar with the residential code as, as I am with commercial code, but and the code's just changed. Does an R2 require a sprinkler system? Because if he's changing stuff and has to come up to code, that's, there's an expense there that he might not be aware of. Do you know if, if the R2s require it?
Uh, but I believe I'd have to refer to the new code, which came out Tuesday, but um, it very well could be because you have uh, an occupancy below grade.
Right, so Tim, just, you know, that's one thing just keep in mind because, because you don't have a certificate of occupancy. Mike's going to be looking at the newer code.
Okay.
And art, and it's listed as a residential two because it's got more than two dwelling units. So it might kick you into some things that you're not prepared for yet.
Right.
That's why he needs to get an architect to design the apartments to code. See what he's got, evaluate the building itself and then come up to meet code.
And that would just be for the two new apartments, right?
Be for the whole, be for the whole building.
Not necessarily because it would be existing code, so I, you know, that's, that's where Mike's got to look at it. It might just be for the below grade ones.
Yeah, the only thing that, that I'm thinking is, is if we approve the two additional apartments with the attachment of that it has to be brought up to code for a CO, CO. I would imagine that they would want to do a CO on the entire building, so you know. He- here's a suggestion I would make because I think that this is a legitimate question that if you had to put in a sprinkler system in the entire building to get those two apartments down there, the cost of retrofitting the building might far exceed the revenue for many years. And, and so I would make a friendly suggestion um, that we table this vote until he can research with his attorney and, and whoever else he needs to, as to what codes this would impact if he gets the approval for this. Um, so that he can make an economic decision without creating a bigger mess for him. That Tim would give you the opportunity that you came back and found out you had to make the whole building sprinkler and do all sorts of other major renovations. It could no, make the property no longer uh, financially viable. You could withdraw your application and vacate those two apartments.
Well, just remember, it's a residential sprinkler system that he'd be looking at, so it's different from commercial.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not that, that familiar with that.
Oh.
Yeah. Mark, if I can make it a suggestion too, is if you do make any positive decision it, it stays with the life of the building. So if he wanted to get out from it and, you know, at that point, if he if he was approved, if he was approved, say, um, he, and he didn't want to pu- put out the sprinkler uh, expense. Um, he could still sell the building and remove the apartments. Having a variance, knowing that you'd have to put sprinklers in either I mean, throughout the whole building, because you can't just purchase.
Exactly.
And anyway, so instead of you know.
So that's, Tim, what I would suggest is, you know, maybe you might want to talk offline to Terry there and see what he thinks. Um, because I think that you might want to understand the economics of the, of a positive decision could have on the building, because what what Mike is saying to you is if we give you a positive decision, then all of a sudden you find out it's cost prohibitive to modify the buildings, you decide to sell it. Whoever buys it's going to have that liability and it's going to be part of the record. And you're going to have to disclose it when you sell the building and that could be a deal breaker for you.
So they would have to retrofit it if I sold the building?
Yeah, so if we gave you, so for example, if we said yes to those two apartments pending a COI being favorably issued to you, you're going to, you're going to have some expense bringing up to the, the building up to code, which would involve the architect deciding what you have to do. The code just changed last week, so none of us are familiar with, with the codes or are expert enough to give you that advice. And if we say yes, you're going to have to go out and go through that process of an architect going through, telling you what you do, bring it to code. You're going to have to bring it to code, have it inspected. And the cost of doing that may negate the, the positive revenue for those two apartments. And you may decide not to do it, but now you're stuck because you've got to, you've got to comply with the, the variance that you were just given. Right? And then if you don't do that, you go to sell the building because you're aware of this and you hire a Realtor, you have to disclose that. So the next buyer is going to know that he's going to have to do these things and that's going to substantially change the economic value of that property. So I, I think you might want to talk with your attorney for advice on this one because we can't give you legal advice. Um, but we certainly can table this until next month to give you time to research what you want to do before we put it to a vote.
Okay, and then I would contact Mike for that code to figure out what the code is.
You contacted an architect, would have to do the, that architect would be the one that you'd want to contact. Uh, because Mike's job is, you know, to inspect it, so you're going to need an architect to actually go through the building that's familiar with the new codes and how all the zoning things are going to impact that and then what the costs associated with that are.
I, I'd recommend, you know, real quick in terms of hiring an architect to just review what the requirements for that building is, I mean, not even quickly they can look up, particularly if they're familiar with residential code. Just look at the code first and say, what are the parameters that you need? Because it, it, at this point, it doesn't really matter whether it's four or six because of the classification that I believe you're an R2. And the fact that you don't have the C of O would mean you need to bring it up to, to code, um. And I believe, Mike, would it be the existing code? Because it's not a new building, so it's under the existing code. And what I think by that, eh, Tim, is we have an existing code versus new building construction, so you're existing. So I believe they would have to look under the existing code for R2 and it might kick you to some of the new building code, but someone could analyze that for you quickly.
Okay. So an architect to look at the new code, but it's an existing building.
It's an existing building that, that does not have a C of O, so depending on, and the onus ends up being with mechanical, electrical and plumbing as opposed to the architectural portion of it.
And energy.
And energy, so there are some things that.
Fire code.
Yeah.
Sprinkler systems. You start with the existing building code.
Yeah, you need someone to check to make sure that you do or do not need the sprinkler system.
It's level three alteration.
Right.
Change of use, change of occupancy.
Okay.
So what would you like to do, Tim? Would you like us to table this until next month? Or would you like us to continue to discuss this as a board and make a determination, either yea or nay, as far as the the variance?
Terry, what do you recommend? You're on mute. Terry, you're on mute.
Yeah, at the bottom of the screen, you'll find that if you bring them out.
Sorry. Sorry. I, I'm doing really well, technology. I, I think tableing it makes more sense at the moment, let's come back in a month, so that Tim can get a lay of the land, and then um, we can present to you what we know we have to do. I, I would guess, Mike, that we'd probably have to meet with you before that meeting, just to tell you what we found out from our architect.
Well, as long as you're aware, I know what an architect's gonna say, so you know, it's, it's up, it's your decision if you get there, correct?
All right, so do I hear a motion to table this discussion until next month?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, it's Julia, make a motion, table it until next month.
Second.
Jack second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
Unanimously aye. All right, guys, good luck with that. Unless you have anything else to say, we're gonna put you back in silent mode and
finish up the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Hope it was helpful.
It was, it was educational. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's see, where's Tim's name here? All right, he left the meeting, so that takes care of that. All right, so the only thing left on the agenda, I believe, is the minutes from the last meeting. Any changes or concerns? We have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I move that we accept the minutes from the December meeting as written.
That was Jack second?
Yeah.
Tim.
Tim seconded? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Those, those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, carried. And, uh, looks like we'll have a next meeting June 5th. 15th, sorry, reading's fundamental.
And I hope if it'll be in this format, or if things will be opened up. So stay tuned as far as how the meeting will be conducted, but it looks like we'll have at least one case on the 15th.
Yeah, well, the governor said that large venues will still be closed until June 26th.
That's why I'm thinking this is what we'll be doing again.
Yep, actually, I like this format, this is pretty nice format, actually.
And I think it works fine.
Yeah, I do, I think this is great. All right, any other, uh, business before we make a motion to adjourn?
I would just, uh, ask that for my clarification, if not others, that prior to our next discussion about this, uh, this variant, uh, that we just discussed, and some sort of clarification about between what Fred is saying and what some other folks are saying, I'd like to, you know, make sure I understand what our attorney's uh, position is on this.
Okay, that's fair.
Karen, Karen, are we allowed to do that? I've been on other boards, we're not allowed to do that, because then it's considered a public meeting if there's more than a certain number.
I'm not suggesting that we have any of that discussion now, at all, I'm suggesting that when we start the meeting to discuss the next, next time around, that we start with Fred explaining what is, is the village attorney says about this use versus area variance request, what's grandfathered in, what in fact we do need to approve, uh, or not.
Did, did I catch at the beginning of the meeting, he was trying to pull his use variance?
Right.
Request?
Yeah, his attorney, his attorney probably read the four criteria and said, you're not gonna meet those four criteria.
Right, so you can't pull the request, or we're done, and you gotta take departments out.
Well, he can pull the request on his application. An applicant has the right to, to, to do that.
Yeah, he can, but that's, that's why he's here in the first place, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it depends on your interpretation of the code, whether he's here for that or he's not. Right, I think there's a reasonable argument, well, the, the, he already is using the property as a multi-unit device, thing, so you're not changing the use.
Yeah, but you're expanding.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know the law that well, so I can't argue that point, but
That's why I wanna hear.
That's why we have, that's why we have Fred here, is he's the lawyer, he can argue that point and, and, and show us what we should be considering, and I think it'd be helpful, Fred, if you could just email us the section of code we should look at that explains what, the point that Mike's making, so we can understand it. I'm not saying you're wrong, Mike, I'm just saying that, you know, I, I don't know what the code says exactly, and sometimes it's a little vague.
All right, but if I write up a code and why he cannot get a building permit, per se, and I put in there, he needs to meet this area variance or this use variance to get there, then the applicant just, can't just go, well, I'm gonna take that variance out.
Well, he can, it doesn't, it just, he can, it just, it doesn't mean that he'll get it, he, he has the right to do whatever he wants, our job as the ZBA is to interpret these questions, right? If, if the code was written and says, you can't paint your house pink, and some guy comes and says, well, I wanna paint it, paint it pink, and you say, well, the code says you can't, then why, you don't need a ZBA at that point, so we're supposed to interpret the code, so in this particular case, it's not that clear.
Let Karen talk.
Stop for a minute. Um, this is something that had already been reviewed, and why it came to where it is. And Fred can concur, this is what Mike Jones is trying to reiterate. This has already been reviewed by code, by the attorney, the pieces of the variances that were required because of the situation. Regardless of what it's on, it might have been grandfathered as a unit, but he's expanding the use. So by change, by expanding the use, that requires a use variance, in addition to the area variances he had before. When the four-unit building was built originally, it was within whatever code it was at that time. Since that time, the zoning districts have changed, so now, even more so, it is not aligned with the zoning requirements. It's, it's, the use is expanding. And even, especially even if it was approved as a four-unit building, the use has expanded.
What I'm, what I'm saying, Karen, is, um, I don't think we have a copy of that legal opinion from the attorney, right? And I think that that would be a
Or to choose, and I will.
I think that'd be appropriate for us to have, because at the end of the day, again, you know, the ZBA has to consider that information and, and make their decision based on the facts, right, and that's, that would be an important fact, right, because not being an attorney, I can't make that judgment, right? But certainly would wanna hear the arguments for it.
I, I don't think there's any.
What about the history of when it was, uh, denied in the past, and the history of this?
Right, I mean, the
The ZBA's effect, got on it and denied it. Do we have the right to overrule them? Is, is that okay or no?
Well, well, the problem, the, the problem is, yeah, you do have the right to overrule them, but the, but the point is, is that the previous, the previous owner of the property just disregarded and did whatever he wanted, um, and this new owner, he did reasonable due diligence, and based on his reasonable due diligence, he made an idea, you know, he made it, he made a determination. And, and I agree, Fred, I, I, I see, you know, I see your opinion, he made.
That's not reasonable, a, a reasonably diligent buyer slash buyer's attorney wouldn't rely merely on assessment records.
That's right.
Look at the zoning code, talk to the zoning code enforcement officer, talk to the municipality, you can't just rely. I see the county records incorrect all the time, and I don't think, you know, reasonably prudent attorneys would rely simply on the county assessment records.
Yeah, I. You would go and look at, for the permits, for the certificate of, particularly, we're not talking about a residential house.
Right.
So I would agree with, with Fred, that, that you can't consider just going to the county record as due diligence. So.
They should have done a zoning letter with the municipality, and, or there, or, you know, it covers just about everything legally you need to buy a building, you know, the occupancy, uh, the use.
Yeah.
Open building permits, any violations, what's state roads, village road, town road, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I, I can tell you, you, you know, Mike and Julia and Brad, you guys are both very knowledgeable in this area, right? But I can tell you, as a layperson, I've bought two commercial properties, and all of what you just said, working with two different attorneys from two different law firms, I have never once done any of those things that you suggested are prudent, and I'm not saying they're not prudent, but my point, my point, my point is, I, I, I'm, believe me, with what I know now, what you're saying is very prudent, and I'm agreeing with you that that's reasonable and protecting you. But as a layperson, I think that due diligence means something different than people that have experience, right? I mean, I bought two commercial properties and never did any of those things, but knowing what I know today, right, I would probably do all those things, because I could see all the problems you could run into, and I had attorneys do this for me, they said, oh, everything's good, you just gotta look at the title, blah, 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 you're all good. And luckily, knock on wood, I've never had any problems, and it all turned out good, but it could have had a different outcome, so I think when you're looking at laypeople, and this guy doesn't own hundreds of, of, of rental properties, so, you know, he could be a little naive, and he was
Hire an attorney to do that work. You know?
Mark, it's possible from your experience that the attorney you use did all that work, but didn't blow it with you, you know, because a lot of times I'll do the work and won't disclose that to the, you know, to the client, because
Well, that, that's possible, that, that's, that's possible, but think about it from the client's point of view, if you did all that work behind the scenes, and his attorney, which probably wasn't this guy, did all that work behind the scenes, he may or may not know what he did, the attorney just said, yeah, this is okay, because I agree with you, Fred, I don't ask the attorney for every detail, because I trust that the attorneys I hire are smarter and do a good job. And, and, and they do things, just like me, as a financial planner, we do things behind the scenes that we just take care of, right? And so, but as a layperson, you may not be aware of everything you need to be, and I know, you know, that, that this deal was not done with a realtor, it was done between him and the deceased. Um, so they did it together, so they probably hired one attorney, probably the guy selling the property's attorney, because if he hired another attorney, the attorney might have discovered this stuff, whereas the guy that was selling the property had something to hide.
Yeah, what?
Point, I think.
It's a difference between a layperson and a layperson who hires a professional attorney who's supposed to know what they're doing, to do a comprehensive research.
Absolutely, and I, and I think in this case, I would agree that he didn't do a whole lot of due diligence, that he just relied on the one thing. Um, but from my conversation when I was at the property, I'm pretty confident that he, um, you know, he had an attorney that was probably the same attorney for the seller and the buyer, and and I'm sure that the seller wasn't forthcoming, that he had two denials for a six apartment unit that he was
I, I think that you're heading into like really murky waters, because we have to look at it from the point of view of what is allowable, what's not allowable. Because you set a precedent, well, he didn't do this, but we're gonna allow it anyway, I mean, I know that we're not coming up with the the answer right now, because we can't, it's, you know, we're finished with the meeting. But we do have to look at the facts, you know?
Absolutely.
Not make judgments based on, well, you know, he didn't have, you know, the right kind of advice, so we should, you know, it's a pass.
No, absolutely, I, I'm just saying, that's why I suggested we table it, because I think that all of these issues need to be resolved, you know, at the next meeting openly and discussed, because I don't think we had all the information, I think there's some some disagreement in what, what actually everything says, so I think we need the time to gather that information, and he needs time to gather what he wants to do and, and research it. I, I'm absolutely, I agree with you, Julia, a hundred percent.
So I think Fred will give us the groundwork we need to begin the next meeting. We can reiterate where this came about, the requirements, that's code, as to their, his review between Mike and Fred. And we'll have that information before the next meeting, and Fred, maybe if you could be so kind, you could probably introduce why we're, where we're at. We have these applications before us, and then we could proceed from there. Probably don't wanna discuss anything more until we, again, take a look at it ourselves and understand why these applications were brought before us.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So with that, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was Jack?
Jack.
Two seconds.
Everybody else stay here? All those not in, all those not in favor? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Good night, guys, and gals.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night, and
Thank you, Karen.
Karen, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.